Second reading, but we said we would come back to your bill, Bill 42-32. So Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 42, we have discussed it. And what, there was a question about the fiscal waiver. We had a fiscal certificate of waiver included in the committee report. However, we have now dated May 8, 2013, the fiscal note. And so I'd like to make a motion to include this in the committee report and move forward to place Bill 42 on a third reading.
Thank you. So that motion then, and everyone should have a copy dated May 8, 2013, from BBMR, listing the Bill 42-32 COR, then fiscal notice attached to, it will be attached rather to the committee report, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. We're now on Bill Number 136. I recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
She's just modesty. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, if I may, move Bill 136-32 COR to the third reading if I can briefly speak on it.
Yes, you may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your patience. This Bill, 136-32 COR, is an act to rezone lots number 2174 located in Tizen, the municipality of Baragata from agriculture zone to light industrial zone M1. This piece of legislation that was introduced was at the request of the property owners to rezone their Tizen property from the agriculture zone to the light industrial zone. Madam Speaker, in this findings, it is the desire of the owners, which is the Perez family and its administrator Marilyn McGuffney and Marjorie Leon Guerrero, who represent the family of the Perez, the Felipe Leon Guerrero Perez Estate. I just want to make sure that that's right. For the Felipe Leon Guerrero Estate, Madam Speaker, with the passage of Public Law 31-198, all the federal access lands that were returned to the original landowners, Madam Speaker, were designated to the agricultural zone. And like many other Tizen properties, lot number 2174 as returned was already being used for the purposes of other than agriculture. Buildings such as the Gate Theater, the Guam Police Department, mechanic shop, and there were other amenities currently that exist on that property today, Madam Speaker. And it was the intent of this body to assist the owners to promote the highest and best use of their property. So it is with the intent of this legislature to authorize the rezoning of the lot described in the air for the purposes of maintaining a continued development in the use of the property. We did have a public hearing that was held by the late Speaker Ben Panglinen. And at that, there were adjoining property owners that were there to share their support. And more specifically, more specifically, the attorney for the owners adjacent to the property that we're talking about was Attorney Ching, who represented Cortec and said that they support this effort and wanted to make sure since other properties within that area are already being utilized and that there is even activity happening on adjacent properties, that this would be the best way to assist this family was to go ahead and designate it as a light industrial zone area. So we do have letters from the municipal planning council and the letters from Cortec. We also do have the fiscal note. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we have everything here. Then a letter of support from GPA. So I asked, Madam Speaker, that my colleagues help support this effort. I will share a note for the record that when this bill came to us in, and it was on the agenda in October of last year, we were originally working on a map that wasn't registered. So we had to take it off the agenda. And I want a note for the record, Madam Speaker, that this, the original map, which was recorded at land management and its instrument numbers 864, 856, was duly submitted to the clerk of the legislature. And there are copies for the legislative record. So I have the original with me here, a, an original copy, if any of my colleagues would like to see. But I'm also aware that the clerk has, of the legislature, does have an existing copy. So it will suffice the inquiry that you had last year because the map that was submitted back then was not a registered copy with the Department of Land Management. And this got approved in April of 2014. I mean, I'm sorry, May of 2014. So I hope that my colleagues will consider this property for the estate of Felipe Leon Guerrero and their family and their heirs and acknowledge that they want to move forward with a light industrial zone for this area in Tizen. And it's right, again, like I said, next to the Gate Theater and the, and that gym, the old gym. Say no mercy.
And the motion, so anyone who would like to speak on Bill 136, there being none. So the motion then to send 136 to the third reading file without any objection, so ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker? Bill 166?
Madam Speaker, you're recognized on Bill 166.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 166-32 in the third reading file. And I'd like to just briefly discuss it and make, offer some amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you again very much, Mr. Speaker. What, the very first thing that I'd like to do then is that on the title page is to actually change on line one of page, wait, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. Line one. On the, I'm sorry, I need to redo that because I made a mistake. That is 166-32 LS, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land. That's the proper.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you again. On page four, on the substituted or amended bill, where on line one, where it says change the trustee to regents. So instead of the Board of Trustees, it should be Board of Regents. That's the very first amendment, if I could proffer that.
Any objections to the amendment from Board of Trustees to Board of Regents, which is the correct name?
Yes.
No objection.
Thank you. On page, on section two, well, maybe even before I do that, let me just give you some reasons as to why this bill was introduced. And even in the discussion at the public hearing when the President Underwood came, and this was a request, of course, from the university is to be able to transfer lot 5397. And in your, in the packet, it would actually give you, show you the map. What this would do is that it will then become part of the University of Guam's strategic goals. The property is currently being administered by both the University of Guam and the Department of Agriculture. And, but what the university is committing to doing is being very responsible stewards and to ensure that the development of Lot 5397 will complement and be consistent with the original intent of the conservation reserve to advance that conservation, to study the natural soil, of course, and water conditions, and to protect all native plants, animal, and water life. The bill would allow the university to continue on its track to, of course, increase revenues, foster sustainability, and build capacity toward its missions. The President Underwood stated also that by placing set property on the property role of the university increases, of course, the overall value of the university. And that the only change then is in the use of the property with the change of the title in the area where the marine lab is and weary because they're planning then to re-renovate their research facilities. And the committee had made some amendments to the bill. But what I'd like to further recommend, an amendment, and the amendment is on page three by the committee. And if I may, what I'd like to do then, recess after the word, when you go to lot, line 16, it says shall be consistent with the original. And rather than say intent of the, I'd like to delete that, and it'll be the original reservation of the property as a conservative reserve. And I've discussed this with the staff also from the committee, is to delete the using original intent of. So if I can, please delete the intent of the and write in the words reservation of the property as a, then it'll be conservation reserve. And then.
Can we just go?
Are we the whole thing?
Well, no, no, no.
The amendment?
You know, unless you have it in writing, we're going to have to go.
You're right. That's the reason why I'm doing this, unless I can give everyone a copy then, if that's what you want. But let me just say really what it is, that it shall be consistent with the original reservation of the property as a conservation reserve, marine laboratory, and prehistoric site. And then, of course, then it'll continue on that the, that of the advancement of the conservation and the protection and study of the natural soil and water conditions and of all native plants, animal, and water life. And then, of course, the other amendment, that's the first amendment.
Does everybody understand that first amendment?
You don't? Okay, one minute recess.
Okay, let's take a recess and run a cop because you're.
[inaudible]
all the federal access lands that were returned to the original landowners, Madam Speaker, And like many other Tizen properties, lot number 2174 as returned was already being used for the purposes of other than agriculture. Buildings such as the Gate Theater, the Guam Police Department, mechanic shop, and there were other amenities currently that exist on that property today, Madam Speaker. And it was the intent of this body to assist the owners to promote the highest and best use of their property. So it is with the intent of this legislature to authorize the rezoning of the lot described in the air for the purposes of maintaining a continued development in the use of the property. We did have a public hearing that was held by the late Speaker Ben Panglinen. And at that, there were adjoining property owners that were there to share their support. And more specifically, more specifically, the attorney for the owners adjacent to the property that we're talking about was attorney Ching, who represented Cortec and said that they support this effort and wanted to make sure since other properties within that area are already being utilized and that there is even activity happening on adjacent properties, that this would be the best way to assist this family was to go ahead and designate it as a light industrial zone area. So we do have letters from the municipal planning council and the letters from Cortec. And I also do have the fiscal note. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we have everything here. Then a letter of support from GPA. So I asked, Madam Speaker, that my colleagues help support this effort. I will share a note for the record that when this bill came to us in, and it was on the agenda in October of last year, we were originally working on a map that wasn't registered. So we had to take it off the agenda. And I want a note for the record, Madam Speaker, that this, the original map, which was recorded at land management and its instrument numbers 864, 856, was duly submitted to the clerk of the legislature. And there are copies for the legislative record. So I have the original with me here, a, an original copy, if any of my colleagues would like to see. But I'm also aware that the clerk has, of the legislature, does have an existing copy. So it will suffice the inquiry that you had last year because the map that was submitted back then was not a registered copy with the Department of Land Management. And this got approved in April of 2014. I mean, I'm sorry, May of 2014. So I hope that my colleagues will consider this property for the estate of Felipe Leon Guerrero and their family and their heirs and acknowledge that they want to move forward with a light industrial zone for this area in Tizen. And it's right, again, like I said, next to the Gate Theater and the, and that gym, the old gym. Say no mercy. And the motion, so anyone who would like to speak on Bill 136, there being none. So the motion then to send 136 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill 284-32 as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs in the third reading. Be allowed to discuss it?
Any objections? Hearing none.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, what this bill is, is it establishes the position of a medical director over at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. There is currently no law, rule, or regulation that actually authorizes or allows the director to have a medical director. Yet they have been using one of the physician specialists over at Public Health to act as a medical director. And so what we wanted to do here with this, with this piece of legislation is to ensure that now it's, that we have it set in statute that, you know, we lay out what the duties and responsibilities are of the medical director. And I want to thank the committee, the vice speaker, for working with me and also with Public Health to ensure that we move this bill forward. And so we did a lot of work in the markup to come to what we have here this afternoon, Madam Speaker. And before I move on, Madam Speaker, I'd like to, I guess, on the version we have with us, we have on page eight, an exhibit, exhibit A.
to ensure that we don't, you know, we try to use our government resources as wisely as possible, what we've decided to take, the course of action to take, is to do it how they've been doing it for the past couple of years, which is, you have a physician specialist at Public Health, and programs, some federal programs require a medical director, so what has happened is that you've, they've given the, some duties of a medical director to existing physician specialists at the Department of Public Health. And so that was what Dr. Matthews was filling while she was still here. And so with her departure, and, you know, with her leaving the island, there was really, it highlighted, brought to the forefront, the importance of number one, ensuring we have it set in statute that we are creating a medical director and laying out what the responsibilities and duties are of a medical director, but also to provide for a, an incentive so that a physician specialist who is currently employed at the Public Health, who takes on collateral duty as a medical director, would have incentive to do so. We were very blessed with Dr. Matthews, that she's taken on this. We're blessed now with the existing physician specialist who has also taken on this role. However, we know that even now, especially now, with the enactment of the Competitive Wage Act of 2013, we've seen that the health professional pay plan, which these physician specialists are part of, has really taken their salaries back. And so, you know, that's another issue that we would like to, the committee would like to pursue and ensure that we restore that health professional pay plan. But so, in the meantime, ensuring that, number one, again, we establish officially a medical director position, and that this position is going to be served only as a collateral duty on an existing physician specialist. And so that's why we had removed the provisions on the initial version of the bill that had reference a Exhibit Eight, that would, you know, that would have set up an initial pay scale for a medical director. So we've removed that, and the intent is now is to have a medical director, but only that medical director will serve those duties as a collateral duty, and the primary would be physician specialist. Okay, so I ask my colleagues to please support this measure and, you know, be able to move it forward and with a more smooth operations for the department. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Yamashita, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Well, I'm not going to, I'm, the statement I want to make is that I find it, I wonder how a physician specialist is able to add the duties of a medical director. I would think that that was, is a lot of work to do, but if it was Dr. Matthews in the current one, I guess that model works for GMH, and so, but I just put on the floor that, you know, to me, that seems just like a lot. So, and knowing how the author of this, of this measure does his work, I'm just putting that on the record, so I'm not questioning it. But I will add that on, I will raise though, on page seven, on line eight, I think what we want to do is put, "The director of the department is authorized pursuant to negotiations, comma, to add to the base salary of an existing physician specialist who's appointed." All right, I think there's some technical corrections that need to be made there, Madam Speaker. So that would be a comma after the word "negotiations" on line eight, and then add the "to" in front of "add," T's, "to," "T-O" in front of "add," yeah, thank you.
Okay, on the amendment, no objections, sort of. Thank you, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Sinekles, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have an appreciation for this bill because it seeks to provide the proper compensation for the services rendered by an official that is doing the job added on top of what they were originally doing. From what I'm understanding here, the current way that the situation is working out is that the physician specialist is assuming the duties of a medical director, and what we're trying to do now is allow them to be compensated for those extra duties that they're performing as a medical director. If I may proffer that as a question to the author, if that's, in that show, what we're trying to do here.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and yes, short answer is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's just a couple, a couple of things that I would like to clarify. The first is on page four, line five. Now, this whole, this whole notion of the director being able to just appoint whomever they want to be the physician specialist that becomes the medical director, I run into the question and concern of seniority and whether or not more senior people may be getting passed over for this appointment by the director, you know, because then it comes almost like a political appointee is thereby appointing somebody else in the classified ranks. And so I'm just, I'm just concerned about the language there that just has the director able to appoint an existing physician specialist without creating some kind of merit-based clarification as to who is entitled to that appointment. The last thing I want is for a director to just, you know, pick somebody because, you know, for, for all the wrong reasons, when others who actually perhaps were as qualified or more qualified weren't afforded that opportunity. And in line of that, I'm just concerned also too about the civil service ramifications. Are, is there, is there an established due process? Because now that we're adding clear compensatory benefits to the appointment of this position, if somebody wants to grieve that they weren't appointed, do we have the steps in place with this particular position for them to be able to, on a merit basis, make a claim that they should have been appointed versus somebody else?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm going to try my best. I think the first question or concern that was raised was that the way it is written here, where we are giving the flexibility and the latitude to the director to be able to appoint the existing physician specialist to serve collateral duties, I, I'm really a firm believer of empowerment, of empowering, you know, our leaders, our directors, who we confirm here in this body to be, you know, to have the latitude, you know, to be able to do things like this, you know? And so I still believe that, you know, the trust that we put into these directors, once they're confirmed in this body, is something that, you know, you know, will be upheld. And sure, you know, there is those events or times where these things can be taken advantage of and abused, but the way, the way, at least from I, from working with the department today and knowing how the department has operated somewhat, I feel that, you know, number one, it's hard enough to hire physician specialists with the type of compensation we have right now. And so to put some extra requirements, you know, hurdles, if I may, may just pose additional roadblocks in making this happen. So that's my first attempted response to the first concern. The second concern about, and please correct me if I don't get it correctly, about whether there is a merit system that must be adhered to, I, you know, to be honest, we didn't venture down that road, and so, and so we don't know. I don't know if it's something that, you know, is required for something like this. It is, it's collateral duty that this existing employee will be taking on at the department, and so I just, I just can't, I can't fully answer that question.
Senator Sinekles, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the retiring speaker. The reason why I have these questions, Madam Speaker, is like, for example, on page four, line 12, where it says the medical director should preferably be a physician specialist in a field of practice or multiple specialties, you know, language like that, preferably, me, you know, kind of opens the door that it may be, it may not be a physician specialist. We do kind of specify that it shall be filled by an existing one, so, you know, I would probably make a motion in time to amend the word "preferably" out of there, but I'm just concerned about us granting the authority to a director to be able to appoint within the classified service without there being a merit basis for that appointment that would allow for a due process to take place in the event that somebody were to get passed up for a position that they felt that they were entitled to. And maybe I would like to defer an open question to my colleagues if there's any precedence for something like this existing in the government, where a director would be able to appoint within the classified service? Because we're talking about basically somebody who can get a $50,000 raise, a $50,000 raise overnight, just by getting appointed by the director. That's quite a, that's quite a generous authorization, and for that to be able to be just kind of, you know, tossed into the classified service like that, it does make me a little concerned. So I guess, Madam Speaker, if you may clarify, or if I may openly ask, if this is pre-existing or is there any precedence for this kind of, this kind of incentive bonus pay on base salary?
Senator, do you want to yield to the question? Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you again, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the retiring speaker. You know, one of the reasons why we've really struggled with this, and we have the, you know, on line 12, as the retiring speaker has read, that the medical director should preferably be a physician specialist in a field of practice or multiple specialties required by the department, is that we've already, the department has already have had a difficult time, as I stated earlier, recruiting a physician specialist to work at the department. And so what this, you know, what this section is saying, that, you know, preferably this physician specialist, if there is two or three of them, that has, has, you know, has multiple specialties. And so one physician specialist may have just one specialty. If that's the only one that we have there at that time, then that's the only one who's going to be appointed by the director. And so knowing full well that the physician specialist who we had for many years, who was acting as a, who was taking on the role as a medical director, has left, has left us because the very reason that, you know, there really isn't the compensation that we offered, you know, to that, for this position, for the work that's being done, is just really very minimal compared to what other opportunities can be, you know, had out there, you know, not just on island but even off island. And so I understand where the colleague is going with this, but then, you know, we've, we've taken time to really work with the department, work with other classified individuals who are in the department, who know the difficulties in bringing on physician specialists at the department, and even now taking on the responsibility as a medical director. And so I still have faith in the system, I have faith and trust that, you know, we're not, sure, we always have to hold people accountable and be very careful, but I still have faith and trust in the system that we have in place.
Because I'm sitting up here, you can excuse me maybe just to give you some additional information, just in case. It may not be totally relevant, however, there are certain departments and agencies where we've allowed through legislation that the highest ranking, most qualified individual because of a specialty can serve as a director, and then the next second person becomes the deputy. In this case, because they don't have a deputy, but because maybe the medical director is almost like a deputy in a way that I'm, in my own mind, I'm thinking now, because then it's a specialist, a very specific profession. That's the only one I know of, that in the area of the police and fire department where, and customs, where that's applicable, that you try to get the highest person to move up the ranks for certain positions. But not legislatively, at least in the past terms that I've been, that we haven't not done it. The only suggestion, I guess, is that you started to allude to whether it should be, should preferably, should be the same as the language on page, I mean, on line five, that you may want to make that consistent, than me. So, but I don't know if that has helped in any way.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Perhaps if I may just pose a question then to the author, if we, if there is any, any challenge or any concern with them create, with them requiring that the position of medical director be appointed on the basis of merit and seniority, if we can include that language, would there be any issue? I like to pose that as a question with the, you're okay? Okay, so I'd like to make an amendment at this time, Madam Speaker, on page four, line five, after the word "specialist," include language that says, "on the basis of merit And, "and shall be," I'm sorry, "the position shall be filled by an existing physician specialist on the basis of merit and seniority, and..."
Yes, we'll take a brief recess because then language probably from five and 12 might cap to.
Yes, Madam Speaker, we will go ahead.
Okay, so we'll take a brief recess.
Thank you.
Back in session, the mover and the author are going to be working with legal counsel and amendments, so we're going to do a set aside. No objections then, so order 287. Senator Munia Barnes, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I could move 287-32-CR to the third reading and if I can speak on it briefly, please?
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay. Madam Speaker, 287-32-CR is an act to authorize the Imagallay in Guam to exchange government-owned property in Ascenan Ordat Chalampago, reserved for the Department of Public Health and Social Services for government-owned property in Dedido owned by the Chamorro Land Trust. Madam Speaker, let me share some relevant facts on this intent. There is a need for a new environmental public health laboratory in Guam, and the Department of Public Health and Social Services has secured a grant funding for this project through the United States Department of Interior. There exists certain government of Guam lands that have been reserved for the use of the Department of Public Health and Social Service for the construction of certain facilities, including the environmental public health laboratory in Ascenan, which is Ordat Chalampago. GURA, the Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority, and the Department of Public Health and Social Services have collaboratively, have determined that there is more, there is a more suitable parcel of property located adjacent to the existing Northern Regional Health Center in Dedido, which a lot of us know as the public health, Northern Public Health, is currently undeveloped and is within the inventory of Chamorro Land Trust. By exchanging these two properties, the need for a suitable location for the new environmental public health laboratory can be met while increasing the amount of land within the Chamorro Land Trust inventory. This matter was considered by the Chamorro Land Trust board members, who agreed with the transfer, and there's, it was also recorded in their minutes, Madam Speaker. I will share with you, Madam Speaker, that there are, based on how we normally do things, this, the, when we deal with land, Madam Speaker, if I may, the Dedido Municipal Planning Council, which is in the municipality of Dedido, introduced Resolution 2013-11, and it supported the efforts of the utilization of this property and to be used for the environmental lab, which is right next to the community, the Northern Community Health Center. And for those wanting to know where exactly it is, it's on along West Santa Monica Avenue. So, they sent in a resolution in support. Of course, we have James Gilliam, who is facilitating this movement, and he submitted his letter of support, also with the Department of Public Health and Social Services. They did send a letter to the Department of Chamorro Land Trust, and then they had their meeting and there was an approval. Some may ask, Madam Speaker, about the appraisal requirement. Section three of this bill will provide for a waiver of this requirement. Sections 2107B of Chapter Two, Title Two of the Guam Code annotated requires two appraisals for the transfer of land or leasing of land before any consideration by the legislature. The reason why we're asking for this waiver, Madam Speaker, is this is not leaving the inventory of the government of Guam, it's just going from one government agency to another government agency. I will note, Madam Speaker, that there were also concerns regarding the value for value or area for area. I want to note that the distinction is more important when we are dealing with condemning the private land and unlike here where we are dealing with, like I said earlier, the government of Guam and the Chamorro Land Trust, and the recipient in this situation is the Chamorro Land Trust, which they will be receiving more land than what it is giving up. The reason behind considering the value for value or area for area is to determine whether the transaction is fair to those involved. I will note that in this situation, those involved, both government entities, have determined that the exchange is fair. I know that there was a companion bill to this, Madam Speaker, and because the companion bill isn't being entertained because we are working closely with the mayor of Timuning in that matter, the agency still felt that we should move on because we do have that money from the Department of Interior and we want to facilitate this moving forward. So, I asked my colleagues to help me and assist me in building this environmental lab, some way also known as the mosquito lab. Madam Speaker, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that there are several, I guess, illnesses going around as it relates to dengue fever and, oh, there's another one. There, in the past, it was the H1N1 and then one or two others. And what we had to do in the past, when these tests were being done, we'd have to send them off and wait for two to three weeks sometimes for the testing to come back. If we are allowed to do this, Madam Speaker, and work closely with the agencies, Department of Public Health, GURA, with the mayors, then with the mayor of Dedido, and knowing that Chamorro Land Trust wants to work with the stakeholders, I think that, I believe it's a fair exchange. And to have an environmental lab that could be very beneficial to our people and to what is happening all around us and in other places, we definitely know that we don't want those kind of incidents to happen here, but sometime, in order to get tested here, a lot of things need to be sent off island because we don't have the laboratory here to work it, the expertise here to work it. And knowing that we have the resources ready today, that this is a time that we can work to facilitate this and make it possible, a benefit for, and possible for our community. So, I'm asking that my colleagues please take careful consideration of this and help me support this and pass this effort moving over, moving forward. So, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, and again, I hope my colleagues support this effort. San Amasi.
Under motion, Senator Tom Adda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, again, I, as was the case with the first land exchange bill, I do have some questions and I hope that the author would yield. And I need to understand just what we are doing here. We do give a description of this lot 3470 located in Ascenan, in Ordat Chalampago, and that lot 3470 consists of an area of 117 acres, which is equivalent to 473,500 square meters. So, are we saying that Department of Public Health is going to give to the Chamorro Land Trust this 470,000-plus square meters of property in exchange for the 10,000 square meters of property that the Chamorro Land Trust has in Dedido? So, first of all, is that what we're talking about, or are we talking about carving out 10,000 or 11, yeah, 10,000 square meters of the property owned by Department of Public Health in Ascenan, and we're going to give that to the Chamorro Land Trust in exchange for the 10,000 square meters in Dedido?
Do you yield, Senator?
Mr. Speaker, the intent of the bill was, was that the property that the Department of Public Health owns in Chalampago, that portion, that property was going to be transferred to the Department of, to the Chamorro Land Trust if this bill and a companion bill, which was to be utilized for the foster care homes, would be exchanged so that Public Health could build these facilities that were needed. And just based on his inquiry, I do know now that I may need to work with legal counsel to work the necessary amendments. But yes, the intent was that Department of Public Health owns the property in Ascenan. They have the resources to build in the village of Dedido and in the village of Timuning, it was what they were requesting for, to build the environmental lab is the one in Dedido and to build the foster care homes in Timuning. But because our statute specifically states that each parcel that is being, going to be separated or transferred had to be a single lot item, we had to break up the bills. So, but that didn't get reported, so...
So, should we set this to the side and you get that clarification?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker.
All right, thank you. So, the...
Well, if we're going to set it aside, Mr. Speaker, maybe we should finish with the questioning so that when the author goes back to work on it further, there'll be other questions then that can be anticipated and addressed.
All right, do you have any other question?
Yes. And so, the way it's written right now, it gives the impression that Chamorro Land Trust Commission, which owns 10,000 square meters of property in Dedido, an area that has all the infrastructure you need, it has roads, water, power, I mean, just bring in the construction company and we're ready to go. So, the way it reads is it gives the impression that you've got 10,000 square meters of that property in Dedido is going to be exchanged for 117 acres in Ascenan. And I know that that's not the case because I sat in on the public hearing. My understanding serves me, my memory serves me right... My understanding serves me, my memory serves me right, the arrangement was to take that 10,000 square meters of property in Dedido and exchange it with 10,000 square meters of property in Asenan. So, you know, it's like if the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, or the Chamorro Land Trust Commission owns one acre in Tuman, we're going to exchange that one acre for one acre of property in Bubulautalafofa. How you get into Bubulautalafofa is going to be your problem. How you get water and power in there is going to be your problem, and it's going to be on a one-for-one basis. But if you were going to evaluate that, probably one acre of property in Tuman will be equivalent in value to maybe 50 acres in Bubulautalafofa. So we're going to need to reconcile those questions. And now, you know, the argument was being made that, well, we really don't need to evaluate, you know, the value of these properties that's being exchanged because it's staying within the government. Well, I disagree with that. It's not staying within the government. What's happening is we're taking property away from the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and that's property that's not going to be available to the beneficiaries of the Chamorro Land Trust. So you can't convince me that, you know, it's no consequence because it's staying within the government. I mean, if that's the case, maybe we should take that, Chamorro Land Trust Commission should take that and lease it out to start letting it generate some revenues for the Chamorro Land Trust so they can start putting infrastructure into those areas that are intended for residential construction. So we really need to, I think, you know, address this more equitably because we're taking land away from the Chamorro Land Trust beneficiaries. Thank you very much.
Any other Senator wish to pose any questions to the author in the hopes of getting it resolved before we bring this back up? Madam Speaker, do I understand you might have some questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I know that the previous speaker, of course, had asked that question, which I wanted to know is exactly. And I looked through the map, and I was really trying to understand. It has the map, of course, of where the property would want to be, that we want to exchange for, but I don't know where, I'm trying to look at the map to find out where the Chalampago property is and what is available, what infrastructure is available there. Is it flat land or is it just strictly terrain in which nobody be able to go to? Because in reading the public testimony, I think they said that they didn't mind having this exchange done because then the property that they were going to place in the Chamorro Land Trust will be suitable for agriculture farming. But it still doesn't give us any information. I can't find the map, and that's the biggest concern of mine as well. So I agree with the previous speakers that we have to have some.
Okay, so your question's going to be that a map should be attached with a description?
A map for the Chalampago, what's available in terms of infrastructure in Chalampago. And then, of course, the other is that the property in Dedido, that's considered, it's not agricultural, it's considered, what, commercial in Dedido? I don't know what the answers are for any of those.
Okay, so we need a map? We need to know what the.
The maps are there, it's submitted in the committee report, Mr. Speaker, if I may. And yes, it was the intent of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, based on the exchange, that they would be getting an additional $477,000 square meters, 477,928 square meters more. But I will further address this and bring it back to the body based on the inquiries that were set. And look at, the committee report should have a copy of the resolution from Chamorro Land Trust and all the stakeholders that involve, including Dedido, Gura, and Public Health. And I'll just double, make sure, double check on it and make sure that all the questions are answered. So I don't have no objections to setting it aside, just so I can get further clarity. But I ask that my colleagues please look at the committee report and look at the submissions from the government of Guam.
Thank you. There having been no objection, we'll set this to the side and we'll go on to the next bill. Sandra Uggan? Is this computer still up? All right, Senator Rodriguez, 294.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I've moved to place Bill 294 dash 32 on the third reading. Be allowed to discuss it.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, for the past few days, we've been hearing a lot more of the legislative submission, you know, talk. I bring it up because, as I said during the public hearing on this, on this bill, that this really is a police officer submission legislation. You know, we got together with a bunch of police officers who really care about the work that they do. And really, we all say that we value and appreciate the work our men and women in blue do for our community in keeping us safe. And so what this bill does, Mr. Speaker, is that it establishes a source of funding to be able to get the depart, to get Guam Police Department to purchase new vehicles every year and to also have a source of revenue to, a source of revenue to help in maintaining the vehicles they have. Up until this point, Mr. Speaker, we've been relying on federal money, compact impact money, generous donations from the hotel industry, from the tourism industry, from car dealers to provide and donate police vehicles for our men and women in blue to keep our community safe. And so, you know, these officers, when they came together, they said, you know, it's really high time that we, as a government, be able to set aside a funding source, set aside a way to ensure that, you know, we have the local resources to be able to, on a continuing basis, fund, you know, find a way to be able to purchase new vehicles. And so what this does, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, is that it, right now, every vehicle that needs to be registered on Guam needs to go through a safety inspection. And the current statute lays out how much this safety inspection should be. And that amount right now, as it is, as it is on, in the books, is $15. The last time it was changed, back in 2007, where it was from, I believe, $7 to, went up now to $15. And so there was a $3 fee that the law had set aside for REVNTACs for the part of motor vehicles to be able to collect this for their, you know, monitoring of safety inspection stations. However, in our research in developing this, we've discovered that for the long, for years, that this administrative fee that was called the official vehicle inspection fee was being collected. However, nobody in the government knew, except for one person who was collecting this fee, knew that they were actually collecting this money from the service stations. And so when I first introduced the bill, we had our officials over at DOA, BBMR, even REVNTAC saying, oh, no, you're, that's, you know, we, you know, you're, that's bogus money, we don't have that money. And I said, no, we've, we've looked at it, we've researched, and really, we actually talked to that one individual who takes in this money, jots it down, accounts for it, and deposits it, deposits this money into the general fund. And so this money has never been accounted for, it's never accounted for in our annual budgets. And so, you know, we said, instead of raising the fee of safety inspections, it was just, it was an opportunity now to say this money was never going to what it was supposed to go to. However, the department was still, you know, operating, being able to function, but now is going to go into this, this new pot that would now go into good use to ensure that our men in blue, who are out there to protect us and keep our community safe, have the resources to be able to replenish the patrol vehicles they have out there and to repair them. We've heard the stories, even during the public hearing, about our police stations in the villages sometimes having to only have one vehicle. And I know one in Agate, that one vehicle was a Hummer, you know, a Hummer that was donated by the federal government. And so, you know, this now, you know, Mr. Speaker, ensures that at least $350,000 a year is going to be set aside to the special fund to be able to do just that. And so another part of this bill that allows the director the opportunity to adjust this safety inspection fee, you know, gives him a cap, gives him a cap of about 10% to be able to adjust it up or down. And if he decides to go over that 10%, he must go through the administrative adjudication law, which requires the public input, a public hearing, and it comes down here to the legislature for final approval. But, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I want to thank you as the Oversight Chair of Public Safety, as a co-sponsor, and also as the chairman who saw this bill through and bringing it up here and having us being able to discuss it here on the floor. So I thank my other eight co-sponsors, my colleagues who have signed on and asked our other colleagues to please support this. This really is a, is a measure that would ensure that the men and women that we have out there have the tools necessary to protect our island, our community. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. Senator McCready, I think I saw your hand up. Any other Senator wish to speak after Senator McCready? Senator Snodgrass, okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I want to rise in full support of Bill 294 and thank the author for allowing myself to be a co-sponsor. This is a no-brainer. If you talk to any law enforcement officer, most especially the Guam Police Department employees, this is one of the toughest lack of resources that they have in their department, which is lack of vehicles. And you pick any precinct, and most especially, you take the Dedido precinct, when sometimes you have six or eight people riding in one patrol car answering the call of duty. You also hear stories, and you can ask just about anyone, that they have to pay for their own batteries, sometimes their own tires, and little things like that that continue to add up. You know, early in my, in my term, maybe three or four months into my term, I was driving here on a Saturday morning, and I noticed that a police officer was walking, and I pulled over and I asked him if he needed a ride. And he said, no, that was his way of patrolling the area because he didn't have a car. So that, that's a concern of mine. And I'm glad, once again, as we were with the three conservation officers earlier in today's discussions, I'm glad we are prioritizing this body right here, prioritizing public safety and our law enforcement, men and women in uniform. Because if we don't do it, I don't think anyone will. And we are the ones that appropriate these monies for them, we are the ones that should be looking out for them and making sure that they're safe because they're keeping us safe. So, you know, I don't think this piece of legislation needs any more convincing for this body to support it. I know there's going to be some questions, but I thank the author, and he has my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Snodgrass, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank the author for this bill, I think it's a good piece of legislation. I just want to make sure that the math that we're going to be implementing here is exactly what we're trying to intend to accomplish. So if I could just pose a question on page three on the subsection one there that's underlined. It reads, "The director shall, commencing on January 1st, 2015, and every two years thereafter, review the safety inspection fee and may increase or decrease the fee by an amount not greater or less than 10%." Period. And then it goes on to state, "This adjustment shall not require the concurrence of the legislature, provided, however, any proposed increase in excess of 10% shall require the director to conduct the rate review and adoption process of the proposed increase pursuant to the administrative adjudication law." Now, when I read the first sentence of that subsection one there, it says that the director shall, every two years, commencing on January 15th and every two years thereafter, review the fee, and they may increase or decrease that by 10%. That's the first sentence. And then the second sentence says, "It doesn't need the concurrence of the legislature unless the increase is in excess of 10%." Now, what concerns me is, just the way that language is written, technically, the director, on January 1st, can raise the fee 10%, and every two years, raise the fee 10%, raise the fee 10%, raise the fee 10%, because it's not more than 10%. And so I think, I'd like to pose a question to the author, if that was the intent, to allow the director to be able to increase the fee at a compounded rate of 10% every two years without legislative concurrence? Or was the intent to just allow for the fee to go up at a maximum of 10% one time, and in the event they were ever to go higher than that initial 10% increase, that the legislature would need to either be consulted and give its concurrence, or it'll need to go through the AAA process? So I would like to just clarify that, Mr. Speaker.
Do you yield?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the first question about the first part of the, of that section is meant to, you know, what we're saying here is that effective January of next year, the director may take a look at the fee structure set out, the safety inspections, and if they, if he feels, the department feels, that an adjustment needs to be made, if it's within 10%, not over 10%, he can go out and do that on his own. And so, and then if it's over 10%, of course, it has to go through the process, the administrative adjudication law. And so I don't, I don't expect, and this, that's not the intent, of course, to have the director be able to, every, every two years, increase the fee of the safety inspection. However, if it is something that is, that is something that needs to be done based on what, on what the costs are for, let's say, the safety inspection stations or the cost to, you know, of doing business, then the director will have the authority every two years to make those adjustments. But the intent, right off the bat, you know, right off the gate, is not to say, every two years, you can go out and increase it. There's just been no structure put in place. The last time we had a change was through law, was in 2007, where the safety inspection fees were set at $7, I believe, and it was raised to $15. I just don't think we should always come back here as a legislature and say, you know, we feel like, okay, this year we want to raise it, we'll do it. We're setting up a process, a structure, where the department would have the flexibility, we empower them again, to be able to make these changes.
Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, the concern that I have with just allowing the director, every two years, to decide if they want to just increase the fee 10% every two years, is that these are compounded increases. And with compounded increases, you're basically increasing the fee on top of the increase that you just previously passed, on top of the increase that came before that. For example, if you're going to increase at a rate of 10% every year, that means every seven years, or every seven increase occurrences, you're going to double the fee. And, you know, that might not necessarily be a bad thing, but.
Madam Speaker, just a point of information, I think the speaker keeps referencing every year.
Every two years.
That what this, what this says is every two years, you know, so that, you know, the director, the department can look at this starting January 15 and say, because we're not raising anything today. This bill does not raise anything today, it stays at what it is, which is $15. And come January 15, the director says, you know what, it's been this way since 2007, you know, and the safety inspection stations are saying that, you know, things need to be adjusted. be adjusted, then they make that call there. If it's over 10%, they go through the process. But this is not saying every year, the department has the authority to raise it. It's every two years.
Yes, Madam Speaker, every two years. But to be giving somebody the authority to raise a fee every two years at 10% without that having to go through the administrative adjudication process, you know, it just kind of, it creates that open door where, you know, again, we have one individual who is able to say, you know what, I want to just increase fees, and it's the two-year mark, let's just do it. You know, and so, there's a reason why we have the AAA process, Madam Speaker, and that's so that everybody can be afforded the opportunity to provide their input. I don't have any problem with this bill, or the intent of this bill. I just want to make sure that the mechanism that we're setting up to provide for the resources to accomplish it isn't also going to be, on the back end, on the receiving end, getting around the administrative adjudication law that was established for us to be able to operate transparently for our people. The last thing we want is for someone to walk in and say, hey, you know, I got to go and get this vehicle inspected, and all of a sudden, they say, oh, the fee is, you know, it went up. And they'll be like, well, when did that happen? When did the fee go up? Oh, the director raised the fee. Well, I didn't know about this. And the reason why we have the AAA process is that the public can be afforded the opportunity to be aware of any kind of fee increases in the government. I have no problem increasing the fee and requiring it to go to the purpose intended. It's a good purpose. But to have a mechanism in here where the fee can automatically be increased, without the public being made aware, without allowing for their input to be provided, and without truly vetting whether or not the fee increase is necessary, or if it's going to a point where it's beyond necessary, that's what the whole AAA process is for. So, I can see how this language here is intended, has all good intentions, but I think that we need to safeguard against these kind of things happening and not affording the public the opportunity to participate. So, I'd like to propose an amendment, I guess, on page three. I don't have a line number on my version here, Madam Speaker, but referencing that subsection one, the third line in on that, after the words, "by an amount not..." To strike out the words "greater or less than" and to replace it with the words "to exceed a cap of..."
I'm sorry, because my copy of my bill was taken by the vice speaker. Can you get me another copy of the bill? And you're on page what?
Page three, Madam Speaker.
Page three, and what line?
Subsection one. I don't have line numbers on this version here.
Okay.
But it's the third line within that subsection one.
And what is the amendment? Okay, page three. To delete lines three, greater or less than, to delete that, those words?
Yes, delete greater or less than.
Okay, so, on page three, subsection one, line three down, we delete greater or less than. On the amendment, objection, sort of... Oh! Can you just repeat, I guess, the reasons to your deletion?
Sure. Well, I would like to delete greater or less than and replace it with the language saying not to exceed a cap of, not to exceed a cap of 10%. A capped increase of 10%.
May increase or decrease the fee by an amount not...
Not to exceed a capped increase...
Not to exceed a cap...
Capped increase of 10%.
Increase of 10%. Okay.
There will be a difference, Madam Speaker, because the...
A moment. They want to see this amendment in writing, so we'll take a brief recess.
Issue, but they're resolving something else. Why don't we resolve yours?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have circulated in writing the amendment, and I'll go ahead and read it for the record. It amends the original language to state, "The Director shall, commencing on January 1st, 2015, and every two years thereafter, review the safety inspection fee and may increase or decrease the fee by an amount not to ex-- and the new language is not to exceed a capped increase of 10% of the fee on December 31st, 2014." This adjustment shall not require the concurrence of the legislature, provided however, any proposed increase in excess of 10% of the fee on December 31st, 2014, shall require the Director to conduct the rate review and adoption process of the proposed increase pursuant to the administrative adjudication law. So, this reconstruction of the language allows for the 10% increase to take effect in January if they want to raise it up to 10%, and every two years thereafter, they can lower it below 10%, they can raise it as much as they want up to and within that capped amount of 10% of the fee on December 31st, 2014. That way, we're not going to have a compounded every two years 10% fee increase, you know, automatically or, you know, at the discretion of the Director, but instead, we're going to permit for one 10% increase at a maximum, the flexibility for them to adjust that increase if they only want to increase it 3% in January and then, you know, up to 7% two years later, but so long as it's below the 10% of the December 31st rate, then, you know, that's what we're basically going to authorize. But if they're going to go higher than 10%, they need to go to the AAA process and let our people know what the increase is for and when it's going to be taking effect and why it's necessary. That's my amendment for that particular section.
Thank you. Any senator wish to be heard on this Nicholas amendment? Senator Yamashita? After Senator Yamashita, anybody else? Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. First, Mr. Speaker, I'm just going to make a statement that anytime we're going to increase fees, I think there should be a public hearing process. The other-- and, Mr. Speaker, you could probably help me understand this. My understanding of the administration-- administrative adjudication law or the process, the AAA process is, it requires us to have the public hearings, but then it requires, and anything that deals with fee increases, then it requires that proposal to come in front of the legislature. So, this, that line that this adjustment shall not require the concurrence of the legislature provided, etc., doesn't make sense to me.
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I may request, there is another amendment that Senator Espicio is putting together, which deals with this section. I want to ask the mover of this amendment if he would, if we can again set this aside and maybe work together to come up with one amendment that would address all these questions.
Okay. Why don't we set this bill aside, and we'll go to Senator Uggan on his bill? Senator Uggan on Bill 295. I mean, 292, I'm sorry.
This is Masia, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to entertain this particular proposal. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 292, that's 32COR, as amended by the committee in third reading file.
Any objection? Hearing none.
And--
Please. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, for the purposes of our colleagues, if you take a look at the original legislation that is in existence right now, it reads at least 180 consecutive days of service in the U.S. Armed Forces in order for veteran status to be applied towards employment within the government of Guam. And in many cases, individuals in the Reserve as well as in the National Guard are now employed, perhaps in some situations anywhere from 30 days to 45 days, then they would return back home, and if there's another opportunity, they'd be able to deploy again an active-duty status. And it, those days obviously are not consecutive, but cumulatively, they can add up to 180 days of service. So, Mr. Speaker, that is the amendment that is proffered in Bill Number 292, that's 32COR, and it also further clarifies, and I want to thank your committee for inserting this amendment based on the recommendation that was provided, but it clarifies the official documents that would be recognized as documents that the respective government of Guam entity would be able to receive as a result of applying this provision in the court. So, Mr. Speaker, that is what Bill Number 292, that's 32, provides. It changes the consecutive 180-day requirement of service to 180 days of cumulative service to our nation as well as to our country and I certainly, or our island, and I certainly ask our colleagues for your consideration.
Any senator wish to be heard on this bill? Any senator wish to be heard on the bill? I see no hands up. Senator Uggan, you may close, or on the motion to send Bill 292 down to the voting file? There being no objection. 295, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, thank you again for the opportunity to discuss Bill Number 295, that's 32COR, and I'd like to move for its placement as amended by the author in the third reading file.
Any objection? Hearing no objection.
Mr. Speaker, without having to go too much into the details, I just would like to say that there was a very touching story that was shared with you and members of the body who were in attendance at the public hearing, and that is that, in fact, it was because of this young five-year-old questioning his dad about the lack of the use of the football field in Tizen that it directly resulted in his father making direct contributions and upgrades to that particular facility. And within that same year, when that child had inquired, unfortunately, he left his world. The good Lord decided to call him. And it was very touching because not only does the family and the foundation, which was created on his behalf, continue to maintain the football field, but certainly it's appropriate that with the many thousands of students or children that use that field either for soccer or football or for other sport activities, certainly it would pay special tribute to this young man who initiated a concern as to why this facility was not being readily available and used by the community. So, Mr. Speaker, in that regard, I ask for our colleagues' consideration in the renaming of the Tizen football field in honor of Mikel Tan V. Py. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On 295, any other senator wish to be heard? On Bill 295, any senator wish to be heard? Seeing no hands? Senator Uggan, you may close. On the motion to send the bill down to voting file? Senator McCready, 301.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to make a motion to send Bill 301-32 to the third reading file and discuss it briefly.
Any objection? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill 301/32 is an act to amend 52-30 of Chapter 52, Title IX of Guam Code Annotated, and this is relative to the crime of unworn falsification. You know, in discussion with different public safety officers, we discovered that there was a a provision of law that specifically makes it a crime when a provision provides an unsworn false verbal statement. And this is something that I think, or written statement, this is something that has to do with verbal statements. And I think this is, this is a way to kind of turn the table for law enforcement officers and make sure that we have all the right resources and mandates in place to to ensure the safety and being proactive, not reactive, to some of the crimes that's happening in our community. Now, this bill would provide public servants and peace officers the explicit authority to arrest individuals who make false verbal statements. And if you, and if you look at page two, it's only a Section B where I add, "Any verbal provided false statements of his own which he does not then believe to be true." So, this is basically just some language that we're adding to the existing law, and this is something that closes the noose a little tighter and closes the gaps a little tighter on possible criminals and gives a little more leeway to our public safety officers. So, I hope that we can get some support from our colleagues and pass this and make it into law. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just for clarification purposes, on the unworn falsifications defined and punished, it says, "A guilty, a person is guilty of a misdemeanor if intent to mislead a public servant in performing his official function he makes, submits, or uses." And then we go on to have the requirements here. And I'm, I just wanted to ask, maybe perhaps if legal counsel can help to clarify, is it too broad that it's saying, "Mislead a public servant who is performing his official function," or is this within the narrow confines of this particular section? Because technically, if we were to have a public hearing, and as a public servant, I'm asking a question, and somebody makes a verbal statement that we end up proving to be false, which we have done on multiple occasions throughout our public hearing process, would then they be guilty of a misdemeanor? I'm just, I'm just curious if this is within the confines of this particular chapter and title? Or are we, or is this, could this be loosely interpreted to apply to every public servant performing their official function and the dialogue that transpires there, too?
Senator McCready, can you, can you yield to that, or do you wish to have legal counsel address it?
Well, we can, absolutely, we can have legal counsel address it, but I'll yield to the question that when we, because he alluded to the fact that when we're in public hearings, I mean, it is our authority, in our authority, to have them swear under oath when it has to do with appropriation bills or appropriation measures. So, if the, the the senator from Derido/Talafoku would like to, you know, be more specific, then it's absolutely his, his, it's in his authority to proffer an amendment, but maybe we should get clarification from legal counsel before we do that, and if, and if we do come to a conclusion that the body would like to kind of tighten up the language, then I would have no problem with that. But as it does stand, to answer his question, as it does stand now, I think there are measures in place that, that identify fines and punishments for people who do lie under oath or lie to a public servant.
That is correct, Mr. Speaker, but this is with respect to unworn falsifications. So, I'm just, I just want to make sure that, you know, when we're having dialogue, like for example, in a public hearing, and it turns out that somebody was saying one thing, I mean, Mr. Speaker, you very effectively would cross-examine individuals as well during public hearings and then provide the evidence that shows the contrary. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, what we're creating here is, is within a more narrow scope, because I understand the intent is to provide the authority to, for example, customs officers or police officers, but because this broad language refers to a public servant, it also enters into our arena. So, I would like to yield to legal counsel for clarification.
Okay. Why don't we take a short recess? 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 Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we recess till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Hearing no objection.